I'd like to welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting for January 21st. We're starting on time tonight at 7:00 PM. And as customary, I usually, we have one of our council members kind of take care of our call, well, our pledge and our opening ceremonies. And this month is Mr. Zach Bloxum. So Zach, I'll turn the time over to you.
Madam Mayor, we're happy to have our youth council with us this evening. And we've extended an invitation to have them help us with our call to order, our pledge, and our opening prayer. And so Bryson Esplin is going to offer the pledge, and then Elizabeth Scaddy is going to offer the opening prayer. So Bryson and Elizabeth, if you just want to come up to the lectern up here and lead us in the pledge, Bryson, and then Elizabeth can follow as soon as we finish up and offer the prayer.
We all stand? Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful that we could be here tonight. Father, we're thankful for the country that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, please bless those that are serving our country and that are leading us, that they can be blessed with safety and with knowledge. Father, we're thankful for all that you've given us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Very lovely prayer. Thank you. Okay. Council, do you have any municipal events? Excuse me. Sorry, I went out of order. Let me back up here. I need to actually ask for a motion regarding our Leighton City Council work meeting from November 5th.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Leighton City Council work meeting of November 5th, 2020, as written.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now I'll move on to our municipal events. Council, does anyone have any municipal events? Okay, I happen to have one that I'd like to bring to everybody's attention. It was sent out this morning by the Davis County Health Department, and it's regarding the COVID appointments. So all the appointments that have currently been announced, which is like your non-hospital healthcare workers, your first responders, your K through 12, and those 70 and older. What they'd like everyone to know is that they made the decision to open up all of those appointments, beginning tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. So I know that it's been time released as far as when you can call to get those appointments for your COVID vaccination. They're now saying that they'll entertain all of them. The only thing is you need to make sure that when you go onto the website, which is daviscountyutah.gov/health/covid-19/vaccine, that you identify which category you are applying for the vaccine. And they will, then, beginning next week, they'll be conducting additional clinics on Tuesday through Saturday into the foreseeable future. And that these clinics, they expect to vaccinate 1,600 to 1,800 Davis County residents per day. Then, starting also this Saturday, is basically when most of those folks that have already had their first dose should be getting their second dose. So you can see that they're trying to take all the necessary actions they can to kind of make sure that we get our population vaccinated by those who choose to. If you want, if you have any questions, please reach out to the Davis County Health Department. And they do have a phone number here. That number is 801-525-4900. So I just thought it would be prudent that we let our folks know about that. Mr. Thomas, did you say you had an announcement or not?
An announcement. Gary's going to ask us a question here about... What are you going to ask this question about? I forgot.
About whether or not there will be a centennial celebration, notwithstanding COVID this year. There was a question online as to whether or not we would still have some type of centennial celebration.
Mr. Crystal Ball?
And I just wanted to make sure that got mentioned, that we are...
Okay, go ahead and speak to that then.
Oh, well, we're going to have a celebration. It'll start in June, may, some other things may happen a little before, but we will have, try and have what we were planning on doing before, towards the middle of June. We'll have a program in the amphitheater, you know, a few things. I don't know exactly. But yeah, it's still going to happen. If you noticed our sign out front, it says 100 plus one. And if you can't find the sign, maybe they took it down a couple of days ago. I don't know. Yeah, so we're just, last year got erased and it didn't exist, so we're just going to pretend like this year's last year, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, is there any other announcements? Okay. Well, now we get to come to the fun part of our meeting, which we have some verbal petitions and some acknowledgement here of our youth council. As Councilman Bloxum mentioned, we had them involved in our opening exercise, and I'm proud to acknowledge these folks. But in addition to that, I do want to call out Councilmember Don Fitzpatrick. She's our liaison to this group, and she's been extremely proactive in getting the organization going and also focused in the right direction. So with that, we'd now like to call up the advisors, if you wouldn't mind. We have now, Ms. Karen Smith, I know that she wasn't able to be here this evening, so we do want to acknowledge her. She's one of the main advisors. But then we also have Sharla Esplin and Danell Stratton. So I just want to say thank you myself for working with these youths and being able to get this program going, and it's a great honor to be able to acknowledge these kids. And typically, as a mayor, I would announce it, but I really feel like that, knowing that how much work Ms. Fitzpatrick has put into this, if you'd like, I would, if you want to go down to the other podium and call these kids up, I think that would be great. What we'd like you to do, though, is as she calls your name, come up and be acknowledged by your advisors. And then if you could, come around the backside of the diocese here. We would like to give you the acknowledgement of the elbow bump. And then as you exit down this side, if you could, line yourselves up within the center here so that you can be properly sworn in, and then at that point, the parents and those who wish to take photos would like to do that at that time. So Ms. Fitzpatrick, Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Okay. And I just want to express my thanks to the advisors as well. This program's going to be great. First of all, we have our youth city mayor, Elizabeth Scaddy, our youth city mayor pro tem, Whitney Stratton, our youth city manager, Jared Head, our youth city recorder, Haley Bitoff, and then our youth council members, Kira Baldwin, Bryson Esplin, Annabelle Greenhall, Andrew Head, Seth Hurless, and Everest Stratton.
Could you, and just to appease me, I'm an old man, okay? Could you go between the two girls in black right there, the tall one? And could you go between the girls in the black and the pink? Everybody scoot down one step. There we go. Now you guys look to your right and look to your left. Might be the last time you see girls there.
Okay, I just need to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. And I just want to thank the youth again for coming, and I want you to know that that oath that you took is the identical oath that we take as a city council and mayor. So what you're going to be doing for the city is important, and we really appreciate your time and the parents' time for supporting them. Thank you.
Very well said, and congratulations, and we look forward to working with you as we move into this next year.
Okay, and you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the budget meeting, or you're more than, you know, if you want to sneak out, we're not offended by that, so whatever you prefer. Thanks.
You've got to stay. You're turning them out already?
Why do you say things?
There goes that training moment.
I'm out of here.
We'll just give them a minute here, since I think they want to go, perhaps maybe enjoy Okay. With that then, I'd like to move on down on our item number four, which is our citizens' comment portion. So if anyone has a comment that they'd like to bring before us, you're welcome to stand up, come up to either side of the, step at the podium and state your name, your address for the record.
Might as well give me a nameplate at this point, right? Mind if I take this off? Is that all right? My name is Daniel Denhalter. I live at 233 Cold Creek Way in the great city of Leighton in the great state of Utah. I'm here, for many times, to continue my plea and to continue my petition with the city council, Madam Mayor, to help me resolve the issue of significant amounts of speeding and ignoring of traffic signs and regulations on the road of Cold Creek. As a reminder, Cold Creek has direct connection to three significant parks, including Ellison and two major schools on that same roadway. It's heavily trafficked, and with the increase of structures that we're going to be putting in Ellison Park, it's only going to increase the amount of foot traffic in that area. We have individuals significantly exceeding the speed limit in dangerous levels. According to the law, it's reckless endangerment because it's over 15 miles per hour over the posted speed limit, and I can only imagine how much further that is. And that's my personal observation, that's not a radar gun or anything like that. Last time I was here, I presented to you guys a handful of ideas and suggestions that were presented. I'm a researcher by trade, so you're kind of, I'm starting to dabble in my wheelhouse a little bit. There was an article that was published in the National Institute of Health that talked about, this was back in February of 2004, it talked about the influence of traffic calming measures in a society like this. They did a post and a protest after they implemented a handful of traffic calming interventions, and the overall activity of the neighborhood, the people's willingness to go out and to be in the city and to be, to take advantage of these great improvements that we're putting forth for the city of Leighton, were, not in Leighton in this case, were utilized at an increase of 80%. So by slowing the traffic in a neighborhood, 80% of that population, over 2,500 households in this study, increased in their activity and their use of the facilities and the parks. I think that there is a fear on that road to let their children play. There's a fear for some people to go out and run, to go out and walk, to use these great things that we've spent lots of taxpayer dollars on to beautify and make this city great. People are afraid of using it because other people are ruining their opportunity to enjoy themselves by speeding and by ignoring traffic signals. So again, presenting my plea. Thank you guys so much for, again, all you do. Madam Mayor, as a little side note, thank you for the Monday with the mayor. I started watching that, and I thought that was great to watch our small businesses have a voice through you. So thank you for that. But again, thank you guys for what you're doing, and thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, seeing that there's no one else in the audience, I'm not sure we'll have another public comment here. Gary, is there any in general, not relating to anything that's on the agenda? Okay. All right, very good. So we'll go ahead and move on then, on our agenda item. Typically, the next item would be our consent item. However, tonight, I'm actually going to switch the order, and we're going to jump down to our public hearing. The purpose of this is because we do want to acknowledge any type of online comment, as well as anyone that should show up here in the chambers, regarding our consolidated fee schedule. So to start that off with, then I'll have our finance director, Mr. Tracy Probert, go ahead and make a presentation for us.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. If you don't mind, Mayor, I'll run through the budget amendment items that are all part of ordinance 21-04, and as we approach the final item, then we have a separate presentation related to that. Would that be fine?
Sure.
Okay. So in, as far as ordinance 21-04, amending the city budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, it's proposed to amend the general fund $358,231.25. $93,441 of that is funded from the fund balance of the general fund, and that is related to the repayment of a grant for the downtown trolley and also a land transaction that occurred with UDOT within this first half of the fiscal year. Also, to recognize $90,000 in revenue received as part of a land transaction between UDOT and Medical Building LLC, which was paid by, to the city by Medical Building LLC. And in addition, $174,000 of that is grant revenue, which was unanticipated when we originally set the budget. Approximately $120,000 of that grant revenue is related to CARES Act funding that needs to be brought into the city budget to cover expenditures for items that were purchased directly related to COVID-19 and the pandemic. We also have grant funding that needs to be recognized in the Davis Metro Fund for hazmat and camera equipment, grant funding that was carried forward in the 911 Dispatch Fund related to COVID-19 of $33,185. $120,000, excuse me, need to look at my number here. $139,905 of HUD COVID grant money carried forward in the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and $10,000 in down payment assistance funding that was part of program income. We have $135 in the Victim Services Fund related to the CARES Act, $29,620 in the Impact Fee Fund, proposed to be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund for the pickleball complex design expenditures at Ellison Park. We have $784,520 in the Capital Projects Fund. The bulk of that is related to $350,000 paid to the city by the county from transient room taxes the county collects to help fund, or tourism taxes, excuse me, that the county collects to help fund the Amphitheater Plaza Project, and $361,000 received from a developer for the development of Harmony Park as part of that subdivision and development. In addition to that, we have $701 of CARES Act funding transferred to the Pool Fund, $73,000 in COVID-19 EMS grant funding and CARES Act funding for the Emergency Medical Fund. And our final item on the budget amendments is an adjustment of $442,225 pertaining to the Water Fund. And as I mentioned, we have a separate, before you open the public hearing, we have a separate presentation related to that increase in the Water Fund. So if that's all right, we'll go with that at this point. I guess I could ask, are there any questions on any of the other amendments, with the exception of the Water Fund, which we'll ask after the presentation?
Okay, no questions. Go ahead and proceed with your presentation then.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, it's good to be with you tonight. As part of the budget amendment that Mr. Probert spoke about, I'd like to give a presentation regarding our water master plan and rate study that was conducted and approved in the 2017 timeframe with the council members that were on the council at the time. Prior to that 2017 master plan approval, the previous water master plan was completed in 2008, and part of that plan was, well, every master plan that the city has focuses on water and the water system, the water sources, and how much supply we have and how much demand that we will foresee in the future, and how do we meet those demands? As everybody knows, water is an essential part of life, and it's a system that touches every person every day, whether they're showering, washing clothes, doing whatever they do with water. And so it's an important asset that the city has, and it's critical that we maintain it at a level that provides the quality of service that improves people's lives and keeps them safe as they use and drink the water in the city. So the master plan evaluation that we went through was not just a simple update of the 2008 plan, it was a very in-depth study that took into account a lot of the factors that we had seen since the 2008 study with regards to the cost of water, the availability of water, and also the future of water in the state as we see the things that the legislators are trying to do to ensure that there is an adequate supply of water to meet the economic growth demands that we're seeing. And part of that study in 2017 focused on bringing together and ensuring that what we were doing was going to not only be a sustainable plan, but a plan that would bring the same quality of service that we come to expect as citizens of Leighton, as well as provide it at a reasonable cost that can continue into the future. So we took a look at the existing system that we had. We took a look at the supply and demand projections that we have for the system. We used existing water consumption data that we have and also financial data to be able to look at the supply that is available and the demand that is available or that is currently on the system, and then looking into the future with our general plan, what we project those demands would be. We also looked at what water sources were available. As we all know, right now, we're in a drought. We're all hoping for some well-needed rain and snow to help fill our reservoirs for this next coming year, but it's something that has to be looked at. What sources do we have, and how can we make up the gap if there is one, and where does that come from? The system also looks at peak supply and demand projections because those are important that when everybody wants to use a system at the same time, there needs to be enough water to supply that demand. We evaluated our distribution system to ensure that all of the current systems that we have would be adequate to provide the water, but then also that as new growth and development came into the city, that the system could handle that new growth without diminishing the service and quality of product that we have on the existing customers. And then with that, the consulting engineer, Bone &amp; Collins &amp; Associates, that we hired to help us with this study, made some recommendations for the improvements that need to happen to our system in order to continue to build in the future and replace and repair the existing facilities that we have. And that came out in the deliverables that we received from them, which was a 10-year capital facilities plan, an impact fee analysis, and then a rate study. And we'll get to the rate study after I talk a little bit more about the system. So a map of the existing system, I believe we showed this a couple of times before. If you don't mind, I think I'm going to take my mask off here so that I can speak a little more clearly. So this is the map of our system. The system is quite complex. It's a Level 4 category system with the State of Utah Division of Drinking Water, which is the highest level that you can be, and based on your size and population that you serve. This map shows the 20 different pressure zones that we have. All the lines in the different colors show all of the different pipes and the sizes that they represent. And then there's other symbols on there for tanks, wells, pressure-reducing valves, and things like that. Some of the statistics that are kind of important to the system is the estimated replacement value of the system is $265 million. We've invested a substantial amount of money in the system over the years that Leighton has been a system, and we've, you know, just like everything, it needs to be repaired and maintained. The system covers the city of Leighton's footprint, which is 22.48 square miles, not a small footprint to have a system. And in that footprint, we have almost 275 miles of pipe ranging from 4 to 24 inches in diameter, 3,300 fire hydrants, 7,300 valves, and just over 20,000 meters that we maintain. We have 15 storage tanks that hold 22 million gallons of water, nine pump stations that can pump almost 10,000 gallons a minute, 51 pressure-reducing valves that manage those 20 different pressure zones. And one of the really important assets that I want to focus a little bit on is our five groundwater wells. So we have five groundwater wells that'll pump almost 8,200 gallons a minute. They produce almost 50% of the water that is provided to the citizens of Leighton. One of the important, I guess, statistics for that is that because those wells are high-quality groundwater, they do not need to be treated to meet the drinking water standards that are required to be met through the State of Utah and the EPA. A substantial savings to the residents of Leighton because that water can be used without extensive treatment costs. The cost of the operations and maintenance of that is also lower because we're not paying for outside sources of treatment and things like that. So those wells, we estimate on the range of about 50% of the cost of what it would take for us to buy that water from somebody else. So a substantial amount of water comes from those five wells. We have seven Weber Basin Water Conservancy District connections that provide about 15,000 gallons a minute of water to us when we need it. The statistics for water usage in 2020 was 4.6 billion gallons of water were used by the residents of Leighton and the businesses here. And that 4.6 billion gallons of water was delivered by 13 certified water operators that we have of Level 4 distribution. Some of those operators, myself included, you know, we have two engineers that are certified, we have two inspectors in my office that are certified, but the majority... certified, we have two inspectors in my office that are certified, but the majority of them work out of our Public Works Maintenance Water Department and do an excellent job providing this water and service to the citizens. In Leighton, we have existing secondary irrigation companies. They have some substantial distribution trunk lines in the city, and you can see those on the map above. The darker black lines show those lines, and those lines are fed by four irrigation reservoirs throughout the city. A substantial amount of water, 2,700 acre feet. To clarify for those who may not know what an acre foot is, an acre foot is 325,851 gallons of water, or enough water to cover one acre of land with 12 inches of water or a foot deep. So just keep that in mind. 325,000 gallons of water is the number. So yeah, there's a lot of calculations in there. But the city currently owns 831 shares of water in those companies. At the time of the master plan, we owned 571. That number equates to 2,800 acre feet of water that we own in those reservoirs that can be put to use for the residents of the city and is currently being put to use by some of them. Out of the master plan came a map, and the map shows different water demand areas. We've got a unique city where we have multiple different irrigation companies. We also have multiple locations where they service, and we have some areas where they don't service. So the areas in green on that map are areas that are provided with indoor and outdoor water by our culinary water system. The blue area is Weaver Basin, pink is, or red is Case Creek Irrigation, the yellow is Davis-Weber Canal, and then the purple area is the focus of a portion of this master plan, which was to figure out how to optimize the water system to provide water into the future. So the purple area out west is mostly growth, new construction area, and that was the focus of a potential secondary irrigation system that would allow us to optimize the water that's available to us. The consultants took our population projections, they took the estimated water use that we had. We looked at several scenarios, and the two that kind of rose to the top was scenario one, as you see on the screen, was to maximize our culinary use and just make everything culinary from here on out and just kind of let the secondary water companies do what they were going to do. The second scenario was to optimize that secondary use and put the water in those reservoirs to use through agreements and other things to be able to provide quality irrigation water to those citizens, as well as help reduce the demand on our culinary system. So the build-out projection is that we need 23,000 acre feet of water. The culinary scenario would require us to have about 20,000 acre feet of culinary and only 3,000 acre feet of secondary. And the optimized secondary scenario was 15,000 acre feet of culinary and 8,000 acre feet of secondary. We looked at existing demands, and we charted this on this map. The bluer colors are lower water demand areas, and the redder colors are higher water demand areas. And you can see the area on the west side of the city is mostly blue right now in this map because it's a lower water demand when it comes to the culinary uses that we see because there's no, or less homes out there. As you look at the map based on our build-out and our general plan, you can see that a large majority of the city goes into these higher demands because that's what happens when growth occurs, is more homes get built and the need comes up.
On that, go back.
Yep.
On the top part, the red, the top?
Yeah.
East, I guess, no, that'd be north, yeah, right there. How come that diminishes? I mean, the homes are there now.
The, there's actually quite a bit of use in that area from, I believe it's the Waste Management Group, and then they, yeah, then I think they project that some of that could develop into maybe, you know, commercial uses that wouldn't need as much water.
I just wondered why things would go down.
Yeah, it's a good point.
We would like to have them all go down, but they're not.
Yeah, there are some land use changes that are projected in the future in that area that I think might reduce that. So again, a summary of those two options, you could see the 20,000 and 3,000 for the maximum culinary use, and then optimized is 15,008. So the question came up, what amount of water do we have available to us so that we can plan for the future? And so they looked at our water rights, they looked at all of the contracts we have with Weaver Basin, and then also our secondary water shares that we have, and they said, how much water is available to Leighton? And that number comes out to 19,810. So we have about 16,000 acre feet of culinary water available to us now and about 3,800 of secondary. And so we said, okay, what potential supplies of water could we have from the secondary companies that are in our area? And currently, what we came up with was about 10,500 acre feet was available, which we had 3,800 of access to already. There were 1,600 obligations that were long-term with other places, so they would not be able to come to Leighton City, and that left 5,000 acre feet that the city could potentially receive in the future for the system. So they put some information onto some graphs for us, and instead of showing you charts, I wanted to show this graph. So in this graph, you can see on the, the back of the graph has different colors for different contracts and sources of water that Leighton City owns in the culinary system, our wells and our Weaver Basin contracts. The blue line at the top of that graph represents the scenario one with optimized secondary water. And the thing to point out here, as you can see, in about 2032, 2035, that blue line rises above the colored bars in the back. And what that indicates is that there would be a deficit in the amount of culinary water available to service the demand that the citizens of Leighton would use. So that means you need to make up that demand through purchasing more water or finding a different way to meet those demands. The red line there, the lower line, shows what would be the optimized secondary use graph, where we could convert some of the potential secondary water users to that secondary system, reduce the amount of culinary water needed, and then growth would catch up, and we would stay below the current amount of water that the city has available to us in the culinary system. But what that means is we need to make up the difference in the culinary system by using secondary water. So the chart that comes out of that shows that if we use the maximum culinary, we would have a deficit of about 4,100 acre feet. Secondary would have a surplus of 5,300 acre feet, which would essentially go somewhere else, be used for something else in some other location because it would not be used here in Leighton. If you use the optimized secondary system, then we would have a small surplus of culinary, about 900 acre feet, and a small surplus of secondary at about 300 acre feet. And so the balance there is the option that the consultants have recommended that we go with, that we use, because not only does it provide us with enough water in the future from both sources, but it also provides us with cheaper water. The secondary water that is in the city now is substantially less cost than it would be to produce more source or to develop more sources, they say, by bringing pipelines in from different locations. So go ahead.
You, and this is under what situation? I mean, you're saying we can buy or have shares, is that what you're talking? That would allow us to do this?
So as development occurs, we have an ordinance that requires that they bring water shares into the city.
Shares, yeah. But what happens when there's no water?
What do you mean, when there's no water?
Well, we have a drought for the next 10 years. You're not going to pull.
So there's a drought contingency plan that has been established by Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District. The Bureau of Reclamation has helped with that. And part of that drought contingency plan, they've actually established procedures and processes to say, how severe is the drought? And if the drought is at this level, then we're going to ask people to reduce 10% or whatever. And they actually address the different sources so that, you know, there's always that give and take of, you know, do the agricultural users get the water first, or do the homes get the water first? And so they've come up with a very comprehensive plan. And as a large supplier of water in this area, we feel like as a staff, that's a very prudent way to operate the system and follow those.
So this is designed, if everything goes?
These are based on what we consider to be reliable.
Okay.
Historical flows.
Right.
So we didn't take the lowest, you know, water year, and we didn't take the highest water year. We said, what is kind of the average, but what is reliable so that we wouldn't overappropriate these resources to the point where, just like you're saying, if we have a drought, then what do we do? Just let everybody's lawns die? That was never the intent, and we want to make sure that we had enough to create a system that works for both.
If you can, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that, as we were talking about costs, we purchased a large amount of our water. As I mentioned, our wells produce 50%. The other 50% comes from our Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District contracts. Just wanted to give a brief history on those contracts. They, they're long-term contracts, there's different district rates that go into those, so these numbers are not, it's a combination of different acre footages that we have contracts on, but the average per acre foot in 2016 we paid was $195.19. And the contract allows Weaver Basin to increase our per acre foot cost based on their operations and maintenance costs that they have every year. And there's also a stipulation in there. The state has placed on, a mandate on the Water Conservancy Districts to create what's called a capital asset recovery and replacement account. And that basically is an account that they hold revenue in and money in to replace the large infrastructure that they have, the reservoirs, the pipelines, all of the distribution system that they have that they wholesale the water to us from. And so there's been a substantial cost increase for them to be mandated to collect those fees to replace big assets. So as you could see, the numbers have increased. This last year, we paid $280 an acre foot for our water, and so the cumulative increase of that is 43%. Those are costs that have not necessarily been passed on every year. As we've received them, we've tried to absorb them as a system, but it becomes increasingly difficult when you see that kind of an increase to not have those costs be directly passed through to the residents of Leighton as we try and operate the system. Many of the costs that we see that are passed on to us by Weaver Basin are the same costs that we see through construction pricing, through pipe material costs going up. You know, we do have testing and other types of costs that are put on us by the State of Utah that we have to meet. And so the question becomes, if you need to come up with 4,106 acre feet of water and you want to buy it from Weaver Basin, the projection is that you're going to have to buy the Bear River Water Project water, and that is estimated at $1,200 an acre foot for about $5 million a year. And so as we were looking at the master plan, we said, is that really the best alternative for us? Is that the cheapest water that we could get? Or is it the most reliable source? Is it those things? And that's where we've looked at this and kind of steered away from that cost because it is substantial, so.
Steve, could you just back up one slide, please?
Yeah.
So to help, to help answer your question, Dave, if you look on the scenario two, it would be much better to have 1,200 surplus in a drought year than be lacking the 4,100 or something over here as well?
No, I understand that, I'm just saying.
So if it's a, yeah, if it's a dry year.
Based on what kind of data? You know, is it based on a give and take, you know, some dry, some wet? You know, the last 50 years divided by, you know, whatever?
Yeah.
And I'm sure it is. I just wanted to understand that if we did have tough times, that there's a contingency?
Yeah.
Because we're not going to have 909, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
It's not going to be there.
But that slide there, to me, shows the importance of the secondary.
Oh, yeah, no.
Because then it doesn't leave.
That's the way you should know.
Yeah, it doesn't leave the area.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. So again, if we want to buy Weaver Basin water, their current facilities are nearing capacity, other cities are purchasing that capacity as well as growth occurs. I mean, that's the nature of the city and the state as we see it right now. And so again, that number is not set in stone, but I can't foresee it getting any lower. When I first was working here at the city, they were kicking around $800 an acre foot, and it just, it continues to go up as costs go up. And, you know, we've seen this last year, we've had a pipe availability shortage due to COVID. We've had a concrete shortage due to COVID and other operational issues, and I know those are somewhat short-term, but you just can never tell, and the costs continue to go up sometimes out of our control. So with the master plan, I talked about recommended projects. The consultant came through and said, are you deficient in any areas? Are you, are you going to be able to meet capacity in the future as things develop? And this is just a map. It's kind of tough to see because it's really something that needs to be blown up and looked at more closely, but each one of the colored lines on that map indicates a different project, and we've spoken a lot about those projects in past presentations. The, oh, excuse me, let's see here. I guess I'm running out of battery possibly. Okay. So they came up with $26 million in improvements that need to happen to the system. Now, those are not improvements just because the system is not maintained, it's, those are new improvements to meet growth demands, as well as projects to mitigate any existing deficiencies now. Luckily, we don't have very many deficiencies in our system. It is a top-rated system, but over the project scope of this plan, $26 million in capital improvements for the culinary system. They also looked at the secondary system as they recommended that we optimize our secondary use to help keep those costs reasonable and to use the water that is in Leighton for the residents of Leighton, and they came up with a list of projects that the secondary system could, would need to be able to function as a high-quality system as well. They came out with about 18 million in capital projects with one pump station for about $675,000, again, over the life of the project plan. So some of the projects we've been able to build, most recently with the funds that have been received from the residents and the developers as they've paid impact fees, this is our brand-new Valley View Water Tank that's just east of Highway 89, south of Cherry Lane, and the pump station that is associated with that in conjunction with the US-89 project that we're all aware of. Very substantial benefit and upgrade to the system that we have here in Leighton. Again, some more photos of the inside of that tank before the walls went up and the pump station kind of in that bottom corner there, you can see what it looked like, and then once it's finished, up in the top right corner. The previous water tank that was built on Oak Ridge Drive, very similar in size, but a large tank as well, serves the citizens of Leighton and works extremely well. It's obviously brand-new, so we would expect it to do that. We've got wells, we've got big pump motors, some construction projects we just recently completed on Snow Creek Drive. But we also have challenges. We have water breaks, you know, some exciting pictures, you know? It's not exciting when it's next to your house and it's causing damage, but those are the things that our operators get to deal with and make sure that we get repaired. And that's the focus of trying to keep our system well-maintained, is that we don't have these types of problems. We have a couple of pipes that are extremely deep. The picture in that top right corner, excuse me, top-left corner is a 20-foot-deep pipe that had a hole in it that we had to go dig up and put shoring around to fix, you know? And then you can see if the pipe breaks and it damages our roadway, then we're fixing roads on top of that. So the center picture there is a track hoe that's 20 feet deep, and at the extent of its reach, to reach that water pipe in the middle of the picture, just some of the challenges that our guys face as they work on our systems. You can see the pipes and the conduit sitting on top of our water lines in that picture on the right. So a couple of maintenance kind of statistics for everybody as we talk about this. Again, 13 certified operators. Some of those work in my office and aren't hands-on, day-to-day maintenance workers, but again, we support our maintenance crews with our engineering and our mapping and things like that. But in 2020, we had 7,300 work orders that we took care of, 71 broken mains, 167-meter leaks, or 300. 71 broken mains, 167 meter leaks, or 390 meter installs, um, 16 service leaks, 50 fire hydrant repairs, and 62 pressure and quality concerns or, or questions that we had brought to us. And then a large majority of the, the work orders are courtesy inspections, move-in, move-out type things and others. So when, when somebody calls and says, I have an issue, we don't just say, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, that's your issue. We, we try and investigate and make sure that if it's an internal issue to their home, that the, they can receive assistance by, by people that can help them. Or if it's a city issue, we make sure that we're, we're trying to take care of that. So, uh, for reference, we had 122 water main breaks in 2019. The average we, we see is probably in the 80, 85 range a year. And that's just because of the, the weather that we have, the freezing thawing temperatures. Sometimes we get, uh, the ground that shifts and it, and it breaks pipes. And, and so we try and make sure our pipes can withstand that. But, uh, again, sometimes it's, it's unavoidable and we have to respond, so.
This curiosity now.
Yeah.
Go back to the picture, go back one. Yeah. What are they standing on?
Those are, those are telecommunications conduits.
How many are there? There's like six.
There's, there's six that I can see and there's probably more in there that, that are.
It's like two of them hit the pipe and just went over it.
Yeah. So. So, so that's the challenge that we work with and, and we try and keep separations. And, and then sometimes unfortunately we have this situation. And, and so not only does it cost us money to repair that pipe, but it takes more time and more energy. And, and, and obviously we want to not get in and damage other facilities. And, and so it, it, it's a, it's an effort sometimes. And, and other times the repairs are a little bit less intensive. But, but in that particular case, yeah, that was a, that was a mess. That's why that picture got taken because we were surprised at how, yeah, how close those were, so.
So Steve?
Yeah.
That's where your hydro excavator really is handy.
Absolutely.
It's an expensive thing, so when it comes up, that's why they need the hydro excavator truck.
Yeah.
But one question, Steve, um, as it comes to my mind, how are we as far as generator backup and so forth to the wells? If we had extended power outage or something?
So, so we have actually, um, put in a request, a grant from FEMA to receive funding for, uh, money to put generators in. Right now we rely on contractors and we have to bring in a generator if we need to, to, to provide that power. So we have, we have submitted a grant. You'll actually see that in one of our, our budget requests, but there's a FEMA grant that we're applying for, or, excuse me, I think it's a BRIC grant, they call it through emergency management. And we're hoping that they will help us provide those generators that'll be permanent fixtures on our system in those critical locations.
But we don't have them now?
Yeah, not right now. We have, we have access to them through agreements with contractors and suppliers, so.
So he brought up a, a thought that I've had. You talked initially about the value of our system, the 245 whatever million dollars. How's it insured against natural disasters? It's precisely what I'm thinking.
Well, I, I know we're, we're insured under the Irma, uh, insurance policies. I'm, I'm not as familiar with that. I would maybe ask Tracy or Alex if they have any. As far as I'm concerned, we're, we're kind of self-insured and we have to have reserves and other things to make sure that, that if there is a natural disaster, we would have to seek disaster funding or something like that if it was a big enough issue.
Okay, and that's kind of my question is, is do we have enough reserve or whatever in case it were a large event that there was a lot of damage?
And, and I think Tracy will speak to that in this, this presentation as well. But yes, it is important, uh, to have a reserve. Uh, again, we, we had an earthquake this year on top of a pandemic and, and we, we came out relatively unscathed with our, our facilities. But, um, you know, if, if we were to lose a water tank, it's three and a half million dollars to build that first picture that we showed you. So, you know, uh, there are pipes that you could, you know, repair for substantially less than that. But, but this pipe is in the center of the screen that you see. It was 20 feet deep and, and the cost to repair that pipe was, was so extensive that we actually evaluated that whole system. And we, we actually ran new water line after we, we got the system back online simply to bring it up to a level in which we could work on it in the future and, and have, you know, a quality system without putting our, our crews at risk. And, and also the time it takes just to excavate a 20-foot deep hole is, is something that means that that's that much longer those residents have to wait for their water to be turned back on, so. Um, and, and to Councilman Day's point, that hydro excavator is an invaluable tool for us to be able to work around these other facilities. Because if we had just ripped those out, you know, telecom, cable TV, all of those different facilities, power possibly, you know, then we would be impacting more than just the water system, so. Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, is that the tip? What's the typical depth for the water, uh, lines? I know it probably varies depending on what they were put in, but just so people understand.
It varies greatly, but, but we bury our water lines between four and seven feet. We've got to be below the frost levels in the, in the ground. But we, we also have implemented a standard that you cannot be below seven feet now because we were having people wanting to install lines like that. And, and it just doesn't work for us. That was a special piece of equipment we had to rent from a contractor to have them come in and dig that hole for us because it's, it's at the reach that that machine has and it's a large machine, so. Luckily, we don't have many of those pipes that deep. But, but yeah, we, we try and stay in that four to seven foot range, so. Okay. So with the master plan, the consultant recommended a, a annual capital budget of three and a half million dollars to maintain our wells and to provide all of the maintenance and, and the things that need to happen with our water meters and the facilities. They also recommended three, 1.3 million dollars per year for 10 years in the plan to construct those projects for the secondary window, or secondary water projects in that 10-year window that we have. Again, they, they have a 10-year, uh, capital plan that they, they put together. And this was the budget that they recommended for that, so. So I'm going to pass this off to Tracy now to talk about the financial end of things. But, but I will still be obviously available for questions if they come up, so.
Whew, I can breathe. Sorry. But, uh, so Steve's gone through a lot of, of really good information. I know at our strategic planning meeting we had the other day, I was very informed. I mean, that was, that was great and I work with him very often, quite frequently. We talk about the finances. So the, the rate, the master plan, part of that, as you're well aware, there's a rate study. And the purpose of that rate study, so that maybe those that we're trying to educate other than you is, you know, at this time, the purpose of the rate study is to come up with rates that will support all of that that he just presented. I mean, a very large, very complex, uh, system that is a very, very important asset to the city. I think someone mentioned, it was, it was probably one of you in the last meeting, that if you don't have a, a good quality water system, you don't have a city, right? Businesses aren't going to come here. People aren't going to be able to live here if you don't have a top-notch water system. And so we have to establish rates that meet some of these goals, right? Are the, is the rate sufficient to operate, maintain and expand a top-rated system? Not just an adequate system or a, or a so-so system, right? We have a top-rated system and we want it to stay that way because that attracts, you know, it allows us to be a community. We want it to be affordable. So we look at the rates and we went through countless scenarios of, uh, you know, should we do, you know, increases in one year, three years, five years? Should we do three years, skip three years, do another three years? Should we incorporate debt into this? Should we not incorporate debt? What did we have to do to get the rates so that they're accomplishing the goals of maintaining, operating and providing this system? Yet it's still reasonable and affordable. As you could see, some of the things that Mr. Jackson mentioned is in 2017, when the plan was adopted, look at where the cost of things are today in 2020. Right? No one would have anticipated that, you know, lumber's going to be $8 for a two-by-four instead of $2 for a two-by-four. No one would have anticipated some of these extremely high costs that have increased. And so all the more reason to continue forward with the plan and to be able to allow the operation and maintenance of the system. Another one of the goals was to bring us in line with state conservation requirements. So we implemented the tiered system. For the longest time, uh, you know, business, you know, residents of Leighton that were dependent on culinary water could pretty much use as much as they wanted. And they did because it didn't cost anything to you. The more you used, it still was the same per thousand. And that was the intent of the conservation requirements was to get people to start thinking about, you know, this is a limited resource and we need to take care of it. And if you want to use more of it, you have to pay more. Again, I mentioned minimize the need for debt. By having a minimal amount of debt on our system, it allows flexibility. You know, we're not just tied into, okay, we built this very large facility and we have to make payments on it. And so now for an extended period of time, all of our money is sucked into those payments and there's no flexibility. Uh, we've talked about flexibility in a number of meetings where, you know, if a secondary project isn't ready right now, we can move a culinary project into its place because they all need to be done to accomplish the goal. And then, uh, Councilmember Fitzpatrick, I believe, just talked about reserves. You know, before we start, before we adopted the, the master plan and rate study, we did not have adequate reserves. You know, we were, those reserves were going down. And that was taken into consideration when the rates were established that, you know, we had, we had tried to maintain around a million dollars in reserves. You know, Steve just talked about if you have a tank go out or one of these water line projects could easily eat up close to a million dollars and you'd be sitting with, you know, not much in the bank. And so that's not a good position to be in. So that was all considered as part of this rate study. Some of the things they looked at, you know, we've gone through this and, and Steve already talked about most of these, so I won't spend a lot of time on, time on them. But, you know, the connections, the demand, affordability, the structure of the rates, the requirements, the revenue requirements that are necessary. And that would be the part, you know, that where I would get involved in. They also had Zion's Bank get involved. So these aren't studies that the city by itself, city employees have come up with. We've hired experts in these fields, right? Experts in the engineering side of it and experts in the financial side of it to pull that all together. They, part of that model pulled out this financial coverage projection. And, uh, as a council, you've seen this a number of times, right? But they, it, one of the things that we like to point out, here's the operation and maintenance. You know, a lot of times in our presentations, we focused on projects. But as Steve just mentioned a couple of slides ago, uh, maintenance is a giant piece of this. You have this, this massive asset out there, this massive system that covers 22 square miles of all differing, differing kinds of terrain in the city. If you've driven from one end to the other, that's part of what makes it beautiful, right? It's not just flat. It has all kinds of, of variety. Well, that causes more operations and maintenance. And so we could see those costs going up on the chart here. And then you have the project costs and we could see the, the kind of straight line in the middle was where our revenue was headed. And so we had to make some adjustments. So the adjustment that's left from the master plan is to move in 2020 for the standard size meter, uh, $20.80 base rate up to 2210. That's a 10% increase. And so that's the third step in what was presented in the master plan and rate study. Obviously, the larger the meters, the, you know, the larger the cost. But that also was adjusted. Part of the rate study looked into the fact that maybe some of those with, with larger meters and, uh, very, very high demand on the system may not have been paying high enough base rates. And so we analyzed that as part of the, the study as well. And those base rates were adjusted accordingly. If we look at base rate comparisons for 10,000 gallons, uh, back when the study was done, Leighton was at 1285 for, for 10,000 gallons. And after three years of increase, including the one that's proposed, we would sit at 2290 for 10,000 gallons. Today, if we look at the rates across, most of these are the exact same cities, similar cities, most in Davis County and then cities of our similar size throughout the state. With a 10% increase, we're at 2290. Without it, we're at 2090. 2090 puts it, or actually 2080, I apologize, there was an error in that slide. But, you know, 2080 puts us still, uh, well below the next possible person now. Mr. Jensen will tout as your city manager that we don't set rates based on what everybody else is doing, right? But I think the important thing to note here between these two is that this is not just a Leighton city issue, the, the issue of increasing water rates, right? This is an issue across every city on this list. We were increasing ours and ending up in the middle somewhere. Three years later, we're coming around to the end of that program and we're back at the bottom. That's because everyone else is doing the same thing. So it's, I, I just point that out because it's not something that's, that unique. And you might be hearing that, oh, well, everybody else is cheaper. No, they're not. And so I think that's a very important thing to notice. So one of the things that, uh, staff recommended and the council was obviously wanted to happen was that after each water year, as this program of the master plan and rate study went through, that we would analyze where we're at on our revenue requirements and how we match up with the plan. Uh, the plan projected certain amounts of revenue based on the rate increases. And where did we end up at in that process? Well, one thing to, to note, so we, the plan projected for the 2020 water year, 10.7 million. We actually brought in 11.5 million. That's an $806,000 difference. And so, you know, you would normally think, well, wow, that was, you know, we're way ahead of where we should be. But the fact is, that was probably the, the, I think we looked at it and it was the 16th driest water year ever. And so you can't really judge things. We talked a minute ago, there was a question about what is this based on? Is it based on wet years, dry years? How do we know we're not going to run out of water? Well, we like to look things at more on an average, right? That we don't, we're not basing things where we stand based on this one year that was very dry. Of that, of that 806,000, around 700,000 of that was additional gallons that were used compared to the prior year. And so as you look at that, that brings that percentage down a lot if we had been in an average year. So what I try, what I've attempted to present here for 2021 as we consider this 10% increase is that if we do no increase, uh, the, the revenue is projected to be 11,894. And if we had an average water year, we would bring in 11,158. So we would then be behind the model by six and a half percent if we want to look at it that way, right? And if we do a 10% increase, we'll sit about 3% ahead of where the projections in the model are. Well, as I look at that, as Mr. Jackson, city engineer looks at that and city manager, we say, well, 3%, that's, that's reasonable, right? When you're talking about a, a very large study, very complex, if, if you're managing to come in within 3% of that, I, I would say you're doing really well. And I did happen to put on here the, the difference between the, the residential water consumption that was billed in 2019 compared to 2020. That was 392 million gallons of additional water. You know, demonstrating the fact that we were in a drought during this last water year. So the rate study, we talked a little bit about what it's supposed to accomplish. Well, in order to accomplish, you know, is it sufficient to operate, maintain and expand the system? We have the financial projections that we've shown you. We've analyzed those projections. We've looked at the billed revenue and we've determined that on an average year, we're running within 3% of what the model says we're supposed to be doing. Affordable to the users. Mr. Jackson went through the fact that we're optimizing the system. You know, we want to use a hybrid type system that allows us to maximize our use of secondary water that's available to us as well as the contracts and wells that we have for culinary water. We're in line with the state conservation requirements. So despite the fact that in my department where we do utility billing, we hear a lot of complaints about the tiered system, right? But the tiered system, decide, beside being a good thing for conservation, was forced upon us, right? By the state, laws are passed. We're required to have a tiered system if we're going to provide water. And this rate structure provides that tiered system. We minimize debt to, to have some flexibility as we go forward with the plan. We want to be able to provide adequate reserves. A lot of times your, your rating agencies, if you were going to go out bond, would say that you need, you know, 150% of operations and maintenance in your reserves. And so this plan sets that up. We have actually brought it, in a way, when we reviewed the rate. We have actually brought it in a way, when we reviewed the rates, in order to bring those percentages down a bit, to make them a little more reasonable and to be able to spread them, we, we kept those reserves at more around an average of probably 100 days operations and maintenance, not 150. So, you know, in reality, there would be some room to move those reserves up according to rating agencies and so forth. And then again, the, the objective of securing the water needed for the future. So that, that kind of summarizes it up. That's, that was a lot of information that relates to, I mean, I guess at this point, we could, you could answer, we could answer any questions and then you could open it up to a public hearing.
Yes, correct. That's the way I'd like to proceed. So council, do you have any questions?
Okay, I actually have a couple. So I kind of feel like I've been a light bulb that's, you know, comes on real slowly over the past week since our last water meeting. But as, as a consumer, as a resident in Leighton, in my mind, it's always been, it's been a 65% increase in our water rates until I did the math. And from 2018 to now, we are looking at a 78.1, 78.1% increase, not 65. And I want the residents to be aware of that. We throw around these 35, 25, 10, we're at a 65%. But in reality, their rates have gone up 78.1% over the last three years due to the fact that each rate is compounded on the previous rate. So question being is, when this study was done, was your goal to reach a 65% rate increase or was your goal to reach that $22.90 rate and you figured this is the way you got to it?
Well, our goal was to look at all of the costs in the plan over, one, you've got a lot of things that are considered to build out. You've got the 10 years' worth of capital projects, operations and maintenance, personnel. And so here is the list of costs for each year and as they are laid out over multiple years, right? So as you do that, then you have to say, how, how do we obtain that each year and what increase is needed in order to obtain that over the long run? So it wasn't just a thing of, you know, we, 22, you know, $22.90. That's just the number that came out in the end. What started out, the original recommendation from the consultant was, you need a 67% increase this year. And that'll be good, right? And of course, as we talked about it as staff, yeah, I don't think that's going to work, right? A 67% increase all at once, that, that doesn't sound like a tenable idea. And so we went, like I mentioned, we did various scenarios of, well, do we do this 35, 20, 10? That seemed to work. That seemed to line everything up with the projects. We did have to spread some projects out a little further than we wanted to. We had to reduce some maintenance costs a little more than we wanted to. We had to reduce the reserve amounts a little more than what we, I shouldn't say more than we wanted to, more than was recommended. And so when we brought those, those levels down, we're able to meet that 35, 20, 10. But we looked at, you know, 30, 15, 5, 5, 5, 5. And then you end up with a 95% increase when you do the compounding that you've talked about. And so, yes, I mean, the, the math is there. You're correct that, I don't believe that I've ever tried to sell that it's a, that it's only a 65% increase. I've more just looked at what it was each year, but you're right, the, the compounding nature of it, it ends up being that amount, so.
And that's just in the residential three-quarter inch line. I looked at the four-inch line and from what they went up, what you readjusted it to where they're at now is like a 400 and something percent increase.
Some of those larger ones could have been more because they were in, you know, they were low. And as we looked at what the AWWA, and Steve could tell you what that actually stands for, but it's something Water Works Association of America, I think. But they have their standards for what the, the volume of water that goes through those types of meters. And then you do a bunch of calculations and come up with what the base rates should be for those sizes. So yes, some of those increased significantly.
Significantly. So since the 2018 rate over the last three years, how much has what we paid or been billed from Weber Basin gone up? So I guess what I'm asking is, is as our rate has gone up, what portion of that is that we're, because we're paying more for what we're getting from Weber Basin, which is 50% of our water? So that it's not, it's not all because of what we're doing in the city, it's meeting those additional revenues that Weber Basin is wanting, correct?
Correct, yeah. And Steve, Mr. Jackson pointed out that they've had a 43% increase over the last three or four years in one of those previous slides, right? So their rate has gone up. We could probably go back to it so that I knew the exact numbers.
2016.
But.
Well, I just want to bring that up so that it's not, it's not completely the city that's raising these rates just because we need to. We're, we're raising them to keep up with what additional we're being charged.
We're, we're the end of the line.
Yeah.
So Weber Basin Water can pass on that cost to us.
And we're going to have to pass it on.
Look, we gotta, we gotta do X, Y, and Z to fix our systems. We have the same fixes. We have no one to pass it on to except the citizens.
Yeah. And just so that there's some understanding with that. And then on the conservation part of it, you talked about scenario two being to either maximize or optimize the secondary system. Are we looking at any conversion? And I'm, I'm thinking specifically City Park and Ellison Park because I think there's lines fairly close to those things. Those are two large consumers of culinary water. Is there anything in this plan that starts saving culinary water and converting to secondary water as a conservation measure?
There, there is a few of those properties like you're talking about where there is the potential to convert a secondary to a culinary, or culinary to a secondary user. Obviously, some of those are private entities and so they would be the ones that would need to make that choice. As far as the city goes, there's, there's a balance we need to make in, in Mr. Probert's office with, with the revenues that are there. And so switching some of these large culinary users off of our system immediately to secondary when we haven't fully taken over the operations and maintenance of that, we would lose enough revenue that that's, that's an issue. So there is a balance that we're trying to strike there, but there are plans in a few areas to do that. But as a whole, that green area that you saw on the map is largely proposed to stay culinary, to balance out the needs for both. Some of the other conservation things we're looking at, the, the state has come out with these regional conservation goals that we have to abide by. And, and many of those are being spearheaded by Weber Basin as well. But we're looking at our landscaping ordinances. We're looking at ways to provide better information to our residents about the water use that they have versus what we anticipate the water needs are. And, and we're trying to, to better educate people as we, as residents, they use the water. Weber Basin's found very high success in, in providing metered statements to their residents that, that they've seen upwards of 40% decrease in the amount of water used simply by telling people how much they're using versus how much they really need. So there are a lot of conservation measures that are going on. Unfortunately, some of those just take a lot of time to get implemented and to kind of change the culture around the water and the availability that's here in the city.
Well, and can you explain a little bit as far, you know, the tiered system was part of the conservation efforts? That's culinary water, though.
Yeah.
So you've got it in there that, you know, money, money's for meters, telemetry to start reading secondary meters. I don't know if that's in this budget or not, but I think the residents need to understand that, that, that needs to be considered. There will be a cost associated with metering pressurized secondary water, not for ag users, but for residential users, that has got to be part of this conservation plan. Just raising the tier thing is not, because they're still out watering their lawns way too often with secondary water. It's a precious resource. We're in a drought season. We've got to figure out ways and, and whether, you know, there's going to be costs associated with those. And I don't know if that's in this budget or not.
So, so there are laws that have been recently passed. They probably will continue to get stronger as, as we move down the road. If Mr. Crane could speak to some of those. But every new secondary connection that is made in the city has to be metered now. So all new developments that have secondary water will have those installed. But, but you are absolutely right, there are costs that would have to be incurred by the city to retrofit meters onto secondary connections. And, and those are things that we have to look at as the law requires it and as we can find ways to do that. Now, many of these conservation goals that you're speaking of are, they're, they're important enough that they're actually putting funding behind some of them even though they're in the, the form of, you know, low interest loans or things like that. But, but I know Weber Basin is using a lot of the Bureau of Reclamation grants that they have received to, to retrofit their system with these meters in order to help conserve that resource because it is such an important asset for everybody in this area, so.
Couple of thoughts, concerns. First of all, thank you for all, I mean, this is the, probably the fifth time you've done this. So thank you both for this. This is, once again, this is very informative and educational. We could have, this council, this was already in the budget. This was decided on in 2017. Like you talked about, the previous council, we had two council members who were on the council then, Mayor Petro and, and Councilman Day. They, that 35% increase, they, they approved that plus the other two that would have happened in the future, July of 2018. And that didn't go into effect until October 2018. So it missed the whole summer season, which was, you didn't want to hit, you know, have that hit when it, during the summer when it's the, the biggest impact, which I felt, well, that's great. The next one was not until, so the following year, July, talked, didn't, didn't really talk about it until almost November. So you missed that season for the, that summer season for the 20% increase. So I believe, you know, the councils were doing, trying to mitigate this, trying to slow this down, the effect on the, on the residents, which I appreciate. This year, our, our budget year, similar. We decided in the, in the, in the beginning of the year not to, we were going to put this aside with those other, those other items that we put on hold, mostly because of COVID, those other items. But this was, once again, let's see what happens. Let's, let's, let's look at the, at the numbers after the, the summer season. And, and so, once again, it could have already happened and just, we could have just sat back and said, oh, just let it happen. And it was already voted on and we didn't, we decided not to do that. So we'd have these discussions. And so I appreciate, once again, the patience with us and, and all of this information. This is a precious resource. This is an asset. This is all of those things that you said and I agree with. The numbers, it, it seems, it, it seems like that's in line with what, what we need to do with, with the largest water system, probably Northern Utah, maybe Ogden's probably bigger, but it's a big deal. My concern is the fact that we're, this, that last increase, the 20% increase, we had news people here. We had the, the room full. It was a public hearing. This is a public hearing. We're talking about a water increase and we've got Mr. Denhalter here and he's only here because of speeding again. There's nobody here. And so the communication of this, I feel, yes, well, did we comply with public notice? The 24 hours, the, the technical part of the communication of this meeting? Yeah. But we didn't communicate it. And thus, we don't have anybody here. And I, and I would imagine we've got very few watching. And so that concerns me in that the numbers don't change because we didn't do that. It still, still makes sense, but the residents, this is their money. This is their system. And, and I feel like they should have, they should be able to come up and, and let us know what they feel. We probably know what that, what those comments are going to contain. But that's part of the process and that's part of, of what we're supposed to do. And, and so I feel like we've done a disservice with the communication of this, not necessarily the information, because the information's awesome. And I'm glad it's being, it's being livestreamed because it'll be recorded and people can watch it after. But I feel like we're, we're, thank you for communicating with us. We just aren't communicating with the, the majority of, of residents who really need to, to hear this as well. So that'd be my, my concern about tonight.
Any other comments, council?
I, I, in some ways echo Councilman Morris, mostly just the, the number. It's more of a procedural question. The merits, I think that I can read what's been put together and I think that we have a finite resource we need to build, we need to improve it, we need to ensure it's sustainable, we need to make sure we're providing for build out. I went out and looked at all the different city websites on what their base rates were and what it would cost. And we are 6,000, 6,000 gallons and 10,000 gallons in the other on our base rate, right? And I couldn't, I couldn't find many cities that were doing that. Most of them had a base rate that was zero. And that's, and then you automatically got put into the tier. And it was, one of them was two, four, six, eight, and 10. So someone would go through five tiers before they would get what we give some of our residents with our base rate. So I think that the city has been incredibly generous in providing an A-class system at C-level pricing, honestly. Because it's not, and if it can't sustain itself, then it can't stay the A-class system that it is. So on the merits of it, I think it's important for us to, to pass along that information to the citizenry that we've taken this very seriously. We took it out of the budget so that we could have these discussions. But I think it's in the city's best interest through my public duty as an elected official to make sure that that system is functioning and that we can acquire and cultivate the water that we have and make sure that it's there for the citizenry. So my concerns are really procedural, just like what Councilman Morris said, just that we have more of a, a dialogue with the community and that when something's noticed or when we have something on the consent calendar and it's titled Consolidated Fee Schedule, that's, that's a factual statement. But I don't think that a regular citizen would see Consolidated Fee Schedule and automatically think they could be raising their water rates. What they're probably going to think is, the photocopy, we don't have something on there for the colored photocopy. That's what they're going to think about a consolidated fee schedule. That's what I would have thought before I stepped foot in here. And so I want to make sure that we're conspicuous with what we're trying to, to send to the people, that they know exactly what we're trying to do. This is a water rate increase. Public hearing on a budget amendment for a water rate increase. That's what I wanted to say. And I want them to show up. And if there's a, if there's 100 people here and they're all telling us that they don't like it, my vote's going to be exactly the same because I think on the merits, this is what my vote requires, that we fund this at least 10%. And we don't tell the citizens that we're not going to look at this moving forward either because we have to make sure that, that we're able to fund the system. But that's, that's the job that I have, is to be able to have someone stand where, where Tracy's at and tell me the entire night that I'm wrong. And I'll listen to them and I'll take what they say. But unless they're substantially changing what I see here in front of me with what the numbers say, my vote is the same. But I would feel much more comfortable if we didn't necessarily move on this action tonight. I would feel more confident if we left open the public hearing for a couple of weeks until our next meeting. And the people had a chance to look at the, the livestream, to look at the great presentations that, that city engineer and city finance provided. And that they could come to us, understanding exactly what's going on and that they don't, they can have full awareness of that we're being transparent to them about what we're trying to do. And that we'll be accountable if they want to come and tell us that they don't agree. So yeah, I, I agree with that, Clint. And I think it's important for us to, to make sure that when we ran, Dave too, we, we ran to say, we're going to be accountable to you. And I, I want to make sure that the people realize that that accountability is not that you're going to agree with me. It's just that we're going to make sure that we're providing you all the information. And if you disagree, it's your place as a public comment to do that. But the number of people who are going to know that there's a water, water increase potentially going to pass tonight in Leighton City are tiny, is a miniscule. And so I would like that two weeks to be able to do that. So my question for the staff would be that, you know, these rates are effective February 1st. I don't believe we're having another, a meeting till after then. So is there anything that would prevent us from, from having this public meeting? If, if it's decided on, and I'm not speaking for the council, just from my own understanding, would there be anything administratively that would prevent us from keeping it open for a couple of weeks for people to, to have their say and then to come back and, and move on it? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's where I'm at. I'm, it has felt like, I mean, I- Okay. Okay. So, that's where I'm at. I'm, it has felt like, I mean, I hesitate to use the analogy, but it's been like a fire hose, a broken water main, or something, trying to get all this information. So, I appreciate it, because I didn't know what an acre foot of water was. So, I needed to learn that. And so, the learning process has been steep, and I think all of us know more, a lot more about, not Tom, but a lot of us know more about water than we ever did beforehand, and it's because the staff provided such great information. So, thank you for doing that. It's helped us to be able, me to feel like we're making an informed decision.
Very good. Additional comments?
Yeah. I see where you're coming from, and I can understand that. But the bottom line is, we're going to have to do it one way or another, and it's not going to stop at 10%. Three or four years from now, something else is going to happen. Water has gone up forever, you know, since we've started buying it and not just taking it off the mountain out of a ditch. And so, part of me is saying, I don't know how anybody could convince me not to, to be honest, because of the need that's there. It's not, you know, it's not like, oh, we can get by. Well, yeah, but then we gotta, we gotta pay for it one way or another. I just didn't have the people that are going to use it, pay for it. The biggest thing I see, they getting this taken care of, but secondly, getting people to understand, they gotta quit using water. You can't water your lawn forever and, you know, green, green. And I think that goes for the city as well. I'm not talking just individuals. You have to look and, and, you know, my wife told me two years ago, or a year ago, whatever it was, what we were paying for water, and I thought, that's way too much. What do we do? So, we started tearing out things, putting in rock, putting in this, doing this, building. I was saving money for something else, we ended up with a deck. So, unlike I need a deck, but we got one, and we don't have to water it. But now, our water bill last summer was less than it's ever been. So, you know, this is going to work both ways. If you want to wait two weeks, I don't think that's critical, as long as we don't push it and push it. If you want to take the heat and do whatever, let people, maybe somebody has some magical solution, I don't know. I don't think so, but, you know, it's not going to change my vote.
Yeah. And I agree with what I've seen. It's more just a setting of precedent that we say, we're willing to spend $440,000 in taxpayer money, what we think we generate, then they have a right to come and tell us what they think about that.
And they have a right to understand what it is. Yeah, what it is, not, I mean, yeah, if I'd have read that, you know, I may have thought, well, is that what that, you know, I wouldn't have, wouldn't have thought that. And I have no problem with that, but at the same time, I want to be made known, we gotta do this. And that's not just my feeling, I, it's more deeply rooted than that. We've got a, water's not going to go down, it's not going to get any better. And if, you know, it's like, my grandfather's, he was a water master, and I worked with him, and he always told me, if you don't have water, Dave, you don't have anything. And I'm like, 13 going, I think we got way too much water, Grandpa, because it's running down the ditch like a wee, but it is. And that's something that, you know, we're going to just have to live with.
I did have one further question. In the rate plan study, they said X amount is available for us to potentially access, that we can buy it, or we can do it. We had some discussion about Case Creek and some potential there. Was any of those, was any of those capital costs or any of that including actually purchasing or accessing those available water shares as part of the whole budgetary timeline?
Can you remember that? So, the plan kind of leans on the fact that the shares that are being used right now by the shareholders are because they're using them on their land, and as the shares come to the city, the plan anticipates that the majority of those will come through development and be brought in as the need is there. So, there is a component in there for repair, replacement of a secondary system, but there is not a purchase cost for that water, because right now, we are not buying those shares. They're being dedicated to us as a condition of development and being able to come to the city.
So, basically, the costs are going to be higher than what are in the study, because we haven't really accounted for having to maintain and make sure that the Case Creek or whatever system is functional and on our same trajectory.
There are, there are costs in that study to maintain that system, but the purchase of additional water from those shares is not necessarily in there, because we don't anticipate that we will have to buy the shares. We have a cost to pay the annual assessment every year that we've built into that, but an outright purchase of the water is not something we're anticipating, because it's a condition of development to bring those to the city.
However, that's only part of the answer, Steve, because if you go back to your chart of all the capital improvement projects, most of those are to utilize that water. And to acquire the rights to that water, they sit in the reservoir, they're absolutely worthless, as most of it is right now. So, to partly answer your question too, Zach, there's huge millions of dollars in the one chart there that the city's projected to spend to bring that water to use. And without those projects, the water's of no use. So, there is no cost, as you exact the water, to bring the right to the city, but to use that water is a whole nother story.
Yeah, to build the infrastructure there is.
That was my question. It's more just like, yeah, if we're taking this, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be making sure it's managed. It's management, not necessarily.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the existing system, I'm talking about future construction to take it out west.
Okay.
Just to my house.
Yeah.
It's already there. Okay. Any further discussion here amongst the council before I entertain a motion to open the public hearing? I mean, this has been great discussion, you guys are bringing up some very valid points, and again, I'll echo what's already been said. I'm not going to get into as much detail, but thank you for the in-depth work that you guys have gone to, to educate the council here, and hopefully with the live streaming, we're educating our citizens as well within our community. And, you know, this is, this is a valuable resource, and we're just doing our fiduciary responsibilities here to be able to make sure that we maintain the quality of life that is expected within our city. So, council, no more further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So, moved?
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. This is now a public hearing, and if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment, you're more than welcome to.
You got some thoughts on this, Daniel?
I will represent the public.
You waited long enough.
That is so your job, by the way. You know, I just wanted to thank you guys for bringing up the fact that this hasn't been communicated to us. This is the first time I've heard of it in my standing, and same as what Councilman Fispatrick said, it feels like it's just jumped, like year after year, it's just jumping and jumping. And thank you, because this education is like, oh, that's why it's jumping, and that's really beneficial. If there's a way to communicate it, you know, the Davis County School District has a phenomenal communication patch. I know when my son's not supposed to be at school, and when he is, the city doesn't. It doesn't communicate that well, except for through my little statement that says, please pay me this. If there was a better way of communicating, that'd be phenomenal. That's, those are my three cents on that, maybe four cents, because you guys asked for it, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. And I will say that, you know, this is, this was a goal of ours in the beginning, and certainly, we've made great strides so far, but there's a lot longer, or a much greater haul to continue that communication. But again, you know, we're doing all that we can. I mean, luckily, we decided to livestream prior to COVID, so that, and thank goodness, that decision was made. Okay, I'll get off that soapbox. Mr. Crane, have we had any online comments yet?
No, I just refreshed it, and we don't have any online comments.
No online comments.
Can I ask a question about that? What are you monitoring for comments?
We've invited on the bottom of the agenda, comments you made through the Leighton's website, corresponding. They'd ask questions to our website.
Okay. You don't monitor the comments that come on the Facebook Live?
No.
Okay.
Can I add to that? So, on the website, sorry.
Yeah, go to the mic.
On the website, when you're trying to livestream, it won't work on a mobile device currently. So, I think there's some sort of problem with that. So, on, at least on Apple device, it's not playing nicely. Laptop's fine, computer's fine, but it hasn't been working the last couple of times. It's just a blank screen. So, anyways, that might help. If there was more of a public forum, some sort of social media outlet might be valuable. So, sorry, keep throwing it at you.
Thank you. That's good information, because we're sitting up here.
And just for your understanding, if, I know it does livestream on YouTube, and I know it does livestream on the Facebook Live. I don't believe that's the proper route for a public comment, but at least it's a place where you could access it. And then they would go on the website, Leighton City's website, to actually provide an actual public comment that you would see on your computer. Okay.
And I think I've announced it enough prior to tonight, but certainly not just on a public hearing, but any comments, that you're welcome to email those to the city prior to 3:00 of the day of, and we can also answer the questions then. So, that's just one more avenue there, so.
Well, and the reason why I ask that is because I've gone back and read some of the comments when I watched the recording later on, and people will comment that, nobody's paying attention to me, I'm here on Facebook, and I'm making these comments, and the city's ignoring me. I think we need to make sure that they know that that's not the appropriate place to make those comments. There is that link that was talked about that will get reviewed in this meeting. We don't have our phones open, we're not on Facebook right now. We don't know what you're saying about us, or about what's going on, until maybe tomorrow. And so, please, if you are watching it through one of the Youtubes or Facebook Lives, that you utilize the proper channel to make comments, so that we get those in an appropriate manner.
Mr. Dave, did you have a comment there? It looked like you were going to.
I'll just wait until you ask if we have any more, till the public's done.
I'm kind of stalling here to see if by chance, anybody might be trying to figure it out and respond. So, again, you know, I think we've got a lot of information here, and it, as Councilman Bloxton mentioned, I mean, it's taken a few meetings to really comprehend it, and even then, there's so much more that we don't know, or that it takes a lot to learn from. So, my hat's off to you guys for picking up as much as you have already, and knowing what, how critical this is. Mr. Crane, anything else?
Look, that's it. A lot of the conversation you get online is back and forth, you know, people talking to each other.
Right.
But, yeah, we have nothing on the official side where they're able to communicate with you.
Okay, very good. Okay, seeing that there's no more there, comments online, council, I've heard what you've said here tonight, and certainly, I'll leave the action up to you as far as how you want to address this public hearing. So, I'll look for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a couple of comments first, and then a motion. I agree totally with Clint and Zach and their comments about the lack of communication with the public. I think we've done the public a real disservice tonight by not properly noticing this. I don't think there's anybody that would, in their wildest dreams, look at a consolidated fee schedule and put that with the water rate, the normal person. I agree totally with Clint and Zach. In fact, I'm going to go a little further and come a little down on the staff. When we had our strategic meeting at the fire station, I specifically remember two of the council members saying, when this comes up, we don't want it just as a consent item, we want a full public hearing on this. And then, when I saw the Agenda Day, that it was listed as a consent item, it was quite disappointing to me. So, with that said, I think the public, the reason we don't have any public comments is because of the improper way that it was noticed. So, I'm going to make a motion now to hold the public hearing open till our next meeting, and I'm going to instruct in that motion that the staff specifically notice this as a public hearing as to water rates, so that the public has no question what's going to be discussed. That's my motion.
Let's make a comment on that. So, normally, we provide seven days' notice for a public hearing, and we won't have that amount of time. I don't, well, we might by the, when's our next meeting?
Two weeks.
Oh, so, we probably will have enough time to provide seven, because we wouldn't be able to get it in this week's, this weekend's paper, and the paper only runs on the weekend. And so, it'll be the next weekend before we do that, and I assume that'll probably be at least seven days. But if you don't care about the seven days' notice, you just want it in the paper before the meeting, then that's fine. And I'll actually take responsibility for advertising it the way I did. I already had the budget amendment paid for, 200 and some dollars at the newspaper. I kind of figured, well, it's an amendment, it's in there, it talks about, we're going to talk all about it. But I see your point. I mean, if you, if you want something that's flat out, this is how it is, water rates, this is what we're talking about, that's not typically ever how we've done it for water rates. So, just so you know, that, it wasn't that we're trying to avoid something, we just never have done it that way.
Right. And that's what I meant, what I meant by it just being a precedent. It was not anything like you were trying to hide it or anything like that. I didn't feel that way. It's just what you've, how you've done it. I just want to kind of go the little bit extra, and just let people know that this is something that will affect their bottom line. And if they want to come, and they, no one shows up, and there's no comments, it was still the right thing to do in my mind.
Yeah. I would just maybe make a comment, maybe Mr. Jensen will get upset with me for making it, but there's countless engineers that live in this city that will come here with a million different ideas of how they think it could be better. But the engineers in this city, and the engineers that were hired to do this study, are the ones that understand this system, right? Any engineer can run calculations, any CPA that lives in this city can run calculations on finance, right? So, just, I mean, be warned of that. You might get a million people in here that want to argue that all this analysis is wrong. Well, I don't know how you dispute what the experts have done related to our system, right? So, anyway.
Well, if we get a million, we might change our mind.
Okay.
But I don't know.
If you get 50.
Okay, I do want to make a comment. Well, I was going to say, I've got a motion on the floor, so.
But the notice doesn't just go in the paper, it needs to be printed on the agendas, because there's numerous people that get those through the state website and the other notices that go out.
So, we'll just have to be.
If it's on the agenda, it needs to, it needs to say the water rate, so people understand that want to look at the agenda, what we're talking about.
So, we'll just title it differently?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
And I gotta look at my badge to see how to say this politely. Paper doesn't do anything. Who reads the paper? I mean, everything else, I mean, literally, how many of you read the paper, you know? Okay, you look at the obituaries, then you look at farm report on who's selling horses. But I mean, and so, realistically, the places that the majority of people read what's going on, Facebook, and I don't know them all, I don't get on, I'm not a social media guy, but that's where people get most of their information out. I mean, I quit taking the paper a long time ago, because it was useless. I shouldn't have said that maybe, but it just didn't meet my needs.
I've got a motion on the floor right now.
But see, Dave, to answer that question.
Legally, we gotta do it. But if we want, if we want to get the word out, then we need to do it.
Okay, you guys, yeah, I was going to say, we're kind of, Gary, thank you.
You need to either have a second on the motion, and then discussion.
Then discussion.
Okay.
Or the motion dies, and then you can just decide whatever you want to do. Or, there is a comment.
Okay. So, council, there is a motion that was made by Councilman Day. Do I hear a second on that, so that we can then go into discussion?
And then, just to repeat the motion, it was to table the item until?
No, to keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, sorry. Keep the public hearing open, and with specific instruction to notice Keep the public hearing open and with specific instruction to notice when it comes back on the agenda as a water rate increase.
Yeah, to leave the public, we'll put date certain to our next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Now I can ask, is there any discussion so we can further that discussion?
I just want to make a statement, I'm really kind of torn actually on what to do. I, I think we've all kind of alluded to the fact we know what we're going to vote. We've put the staff through hours and hours and hours of presentations. I know, I totally agree that it was not advertised appropriately. I asked my husband, look at the agenda and what are we talking about tonight? And he had, when I said water, he said where. So I, I get it. I just, I don't know if, this is where I'm kind of torn, to proceed with the voting or whether in my mind, we just chalk it up, we've made a mistake? Maybe we put something on the city website that explains this presentation that we've just sat through, that the, the staff has spent hours on presenting and doing and making, and we don't ever let this happen again? Or do we move forward and postpone it? So I drag it out, guys, because I'm not sure I'm going to vote on the motion.
Well, it's really just, like I said, it's just a, just a precedent and it's nothing, it's not anything directed towards the staff in my mind. It's just letting people understand that they can review the information and if there's no public comments the next time, then, then that's it. I don't, I don't understand what, what two weeks, we come back and vote on it in two weeks, it's going to be the same vote, I don't, I think people are understanding that. But that two weeks gives the public a chance to be able to at least review what we're doing and potentially provide more public comment. I think it's most, more important is that we're keeping the public comment open, subject to the next vote.
Yeah, and I, I get that, I totally support that, but also worried that we're going to have 50 people in the room, we'll be here till, you know, 2 o'clock the next time. They already, they already knew about the rate increase before that was open to public comment, those comments were done at that time. All we did was take it off so that we could better educate ourselves to decide whether or not it was truly done. And I think we've done that, I think the staff has, has educated us. Like I said, for some of us, the light bulb took a little bit later to turn on than others, but I'm okay either way. I, I just, I see pros and cons both ways of, of doing it.
So one comment is, if there's anything that's been more comments here in the last three years, it's been the water rates. And when it was discussed before, it was only discussed, I believe, noticed as part of the budget. So there again, people aren't going to come down here when we're talking about just the budget compared to if they know that we're specifically going to talk the water rate. And Dave, to your point, the paper may not be the best place to advertise things. I don't think it's our responsibility to go out there and hand a piece of paper to everybody so they can read it. That's their responsibility to get the information. But I do think it's important for us to let them know exactly what's going to be discussed the best that we can so that then they can make their judgment if they want to be here or not.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's, that's my point. I don't feel like I have to go advertise to people.
I've got no problem with that, I would just wanted to say that if, if we're supposed to be, I don't know the term everybody's using, transparent, then paper ain't transparent.
Okay, let, let me just make one comment to that. It's actually in the state statute in the Open Public Meetings Act that it is required to be published in the newspaper and it specifically states in the newspaper. So that is a legality that they have to have, have to go through, but I, I can hear what you're saying as far as additional channels.
It's just if you want to be transparent and open to everybody and get the word out, the paper is the legal part, but the rest is what's going to do it.
Okay. We've done a good job on stalling because now we do have a couple of comments. So, Mr. Crane, would you like to address the two, the comments that you've received, received online?
So you've got a motion and a second. Want to hear the comments before we actually vote on the public hearing?
Yeah.
I was going to say, knowing that that is the biggest concern amongst these council members, I feel like we do need to hear those two comments before they take any further action.
So the first one is from Syria and she says, thank you about the information about water increase. It does seem, it does still seem like a lot. Perhaps offer incentives to pull out loans for more water, why do I choose? It's her comment. Sorry, behind your phone. The second comment was from Chris Young.
Mr. Crane, do we have an address or anything about with these people that are making comment? What do I do?
Just a, just an email address. I can do this. So it's an email address. And then an email address from Chris Young and his comment was, or her comment was, it's concerning to me that the presenter regarding water increase kept saying best water system. And his question was, do we really need best, in quotes?
Okay.
So Mayor, can I make one more comment?
This is discussion, so I will entertain additional discussion.
I by no means expect the staff to come back and give the presentation again. That's, that's not part of this. They have the opportunity to review all that from tonight's presentation. So I don't expect that.
Okay. Any further discussion before I call action on the motion that's presented that has also been seconded? Okay, being that there's none, I will go ahead and take a roll call vote on this motion that Councilmember Day presented as far as keeping the public hearing open until our next meeting, which is the first meeting in February with additional announcements as far as the particulars as, well, clearly stating that it will be a water rate increase. So knowing that, Councilman Day?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Bloxton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Yes, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
We're going to resolve it in two weeks. Is that what we're saying?
No, we're saying we're going to continue the public hearing.
We're going to keep it open.
Don't matter what I say, no.
Okay. Okay, so let the record state that we have four in favor and one against. So that means it passes that we will continue to keep this public hearing open. So that puts us in an unusual circumstances then for the next particular item.
There's more?
Well, we haven't dealt with our consent item yet.
Just kidding.
Can we?
So can we, can we go ahead, can we go ahead and pass the consolidated fee schedule without the water stuff in it? I don't see a problem at all.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, then, council, I think we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is our consent item. And again, Mr. Tracy Probert will go ahead and present that, our consent item, which is to amend Title III, Chapter 3.15 of the Leighton Municipal Code, which is our consolidated fee schedule for ordinance 21-03.
Another question first. Part of that public hearing was the budget amendments. Do they need to be passed minus the water stuff?
No.
No, wait on those?
You've continued the public hearing, so just continue until the next meeting and then pass them all together.
Okay.
And I would almost say that this consolidated fee schedule could just be carried forward to the next meeting as well, rather than do this ordinance and then have to do another ordinance for the remainder of it. Now, maybe Mr. Crane would disagree with that, but I think it would be just as easy just to carry it forward to the next meeting.
There's no rush.
Right. The rest of the items are minor, so.
Would be the, the.
See, that's why I asked, that's why I mentioned that we're in a peculiar situation now for our next item, so.
I think just a motion to continue.
Okay.
That would help with the advertising, not having to redo any ordinance, so.
Okay, so knowing that, do you want, hang on. So I mean, I will entertain that motion, but that brings up the question, should we delay the presentation?
Well, he's really kind of already done it.
He's already done it.
Yeah, he has to us.
Yeah.
But are you, are you comfortable with that? With, with not making a presentation now? I mean, I don't see a need for it on, on this consent item is what I'm saying. So in other words, I could entertain a motion now to postpone this consent item until the next meeting as well.
That's what I would recommend.
I'll go, I'll entertain that motion if anybody would like to make it.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, on the consolidated fee schedule, going to make a motion that we postpone the adoption of ordinance 2103, amending the consolidated fee schedule until our first meeting in February.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, correct? Okay, there you have it. We're good, that passes. So that really brings our meeting to an end.
I move we end the meeting. Sorry.
However, I do, there is one more item, which is your unfinished business. And I've made it a point to make sure that there isn't any unfinished business amongst any of the council members, so Ms. Fitzpatrick, I believe you have an item.
Yeah, last Thursday, when we had the opportunity to meet with our local legislators, we arrived here about 7:20 in the morning, it was pretty dark outside. It was also the same time that Leighton High was coming to school. And there is a crosswalk at the corner of Wasatch and whatever that street is that the library sits on. And the nearest overhead light is a little bit up from that. And I am just wondering, it, it was really dark and there were kids crossing and teenagers driving to school and all of that. Is there any way that that particular stop sign can have those flashing lights? Dave was saying, or Clint was saying during the, when the amphitheater gets out, they have somebody actually help, you know, direct traffic to cross that street at night and stuff. And so I'm wondering for the safety of the students, I mean, we've done that over on Fort Lane where the students, you know, when we had the one hit, we've done that on that stop sign. Is that a possibility that we can look into or is that a, the school district's responsibility? But, but that crosswalk is very dark and, and with school starting at 7:30, it's, it was pitch blackout there last Thursday. So I just am concerned about their safety.
Okay, any other unfinished business?
No, I'd just like Gary to stay for a minute, I got just a couple of other questions for you after. Other than that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's been a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for your patience online and we'll look forward to any additional comments.